It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, County of Starr, Monday, January the eighth. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
First item is the minutes. I don't know if you all had a chance to look at them or want to approve it. The table, whatever you want.
I just want to approve.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next thing is the claims. Mr. Carter?
All claims are moved into motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the second amendment.
Moved in second to approve, claims, discussion. Oliver, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, is there anyone from out of town that would like to go before the court at this time? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and follow our agenda under Reports, the Gas Department. Travis.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, my report is on your package, I think. There's nothing much I need to add to it, except I don't know if you all recalled businesses, several businesses that had come in to ask about the rate. They've been asking again, and they just wanted an answer as to when was the workshop or...
I guess the workshop, whenever it's convenient for them and you all, we can go ahead and call it.
Judge and Commissioners, I have a little to add to that. Mr. Smith came on Friday to our office requesting to be placed on the agenda again for next Commissioners' Court meeting and wanted to know where we were at. But after consulting with our auditor and about the rates consideration for them to be decreased, it's pretty much said we have a budget in the Gas Department that was approved by the Commissioners' Court. If we were to do any type of a change, it would mess up that budget. So I recommend that we do have a workshop sometime this summer, and that way, if there's any change, we can implement it next fiscal year.
Well, and that's fine, but I think if they want a workshop, we need to listen to them.
Sure.
You know, we can go ahead and have it, like I said, at their convenience, and of course...
Okay, we can have it anytime.
...and his people.
Yes, sir.
But it's possible that it's negative. It might not be, we might not be able to do anything, but it is serving us.
Yes, yes. And we can have it whenever. We can have it next week if we want to.
Okay, get with them.
Because we're ready. We're ready. We have numbers and different options. We're ready to have that workshop.
Whenever it's convenient for them, and then let the court know.
Sure.
Whoever can be there will be there.
We'll keep you all informed.
I'll let them know.
Any questions on that report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvis. Transfer station, Mr. Alvis.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, happy new year to all. I did leave a copy of my report in your file. We don't have much to add to that. I mean, we've been operating regular operation, normal operation.
Good morning, Commissioners. In front of you, you have the report for the tax office for the November of 2017. The total what collections for December 2017 are $2,172,000. In December of 2016, there were $2,194,000. There was a total collection of 21 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $1,800,000 more than last year. Our total current collections for the Starr County entities are $1,168,000. Current collections in December 2016 were $1,162,000. There was a total current collection of $6,500 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $926,000 more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for December 2017, just for Starr County, were $199,000. Total delinquent collections in December 2016 were $212,000. That's a total of 12,000 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $137,000 more than last year. We have collected $63,000 of our projected current tax collection for 2018 fiscal year. Projected collections remaining are $4,862,000. You have your reports in front of you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Alvis.
Thank you.
County clerk, Mr. Alvis.
Report it before you all have any questions.
Any questions? In the clerk's report? Thank you, Ms. Alvis. Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Total revenues for the month of December 2017 is $232,477. It's $10,228 more than last month, the month of November. Most of the average count for federal inmates is 143 for the month of December.
Just want to comment on the number of federal inmates. Again, that looks extremely good, so we thank you all for the efforts that you all are doing. Hope we can keep it somewhere in that area.
Yes, sir. We've been also asking for follow-up on the new contract. You're supposed to give me an answer soon.
When do you think you'll hear on that?
I just checked last week. They said it should be soon that I should get an answer. I didn't give you an exact date, but I'll keep on...
Which is that contract, Mr. Alvis?
The new contract for the, we submitted for a new contract to raise the...
For the rates they're going to pay?
Yes.
But that doesn't guarantee that they will continue, or this amount of employees depends on... Is that a guarantee on that contract? They won't give you a guaranteed amount of federal inmate?
No. We're asking, on the new contract, we did ask to try and keep it at least 120.
Okay, but can they guarantee you that?
No, they cannot guarantee.
It cannot be guaranteed?
No, sir.
They're going to tell you that you'll have 120 straight to 12 months?
No, sir. No, there's a lot of factors that will be behind this.
Only your guarantee is the rate that they'll pay you with the pressure that you will hold there.
That is correct.
That's the only guarantee that they will give you?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other question?
Thank you.
International Bridge?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. This is the total revenue for traffic for December 2017. We show $239,217 with 50 cents, and we show a decrease of $3,313 for the month of December 2017 compared to the month of December 2016. And we show an increase of $13,421 on the collections for the month of December 2017 compared to the month of November of 2017. And we have a total of other collections of $775.71, and the grand total for collections for December 2017, it's $239,993 with 21 cents. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Presser, Mr. Pena.
As of November 30th, 2017, the general fund had $1.7 million, being $1.2 million more than at the same time last year. The road and bridge fund was at $250,000, being $504,000 more than at the same time last year. The total amount of funds in all bank accounts was at $11.6 million, or $1.7 million more at the same time last year. We continue to monitor our very low depository accounts balances to ensure their safety. The combined debt for Starr County was $5.9 million, being $2.9 million more than at the same time last year. The county's deposits were well collateralized by the bank at the contract terms. The Starr County unemployment rate from the same time last year to this November 2017 decreased by 3.8 percent to 9.2 percent. The lowest recorded unemployment rate for Starr County is 8.2 percent on October of 2007. Our county labor force decreased by 549 workers, and the number of unemployed workers decreased by 1,038 people. The national seasonally adjusted unemployment rate from the same time last year decreased by 0.5 percent to 4.1 percent, and taxes decreased by 1.0 percent to 3.8 percent. The $2.5 million budget crisis loan will be due in a few days. I would like for the court to authorize the county auditor and myself to start obtaining financial options for the court to deal with a serious matter. Because the deficit was so large, budget cuts for this fiscal year will not be enough to pay this loan, so this year's budget calls for payment number two of $1 million to be made in fiscal year 2019. State approval and a willing lender will be needed, and this takes time. If the state does not allow the county to refinance this community of deficient spending loan, then additional budget cuts will be necessary for this fiscal year.
Good morning. Any questions? Any questions, comments? Thank you. Mr. Carter, auditor?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this morning. This morning's report is a proposed budget amendment to address the shortfalls that many of the department heads have...
Mr. Carter, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think that's an agenda item, isn't it? Or, I thought I had seen it. It's item number nine.
Okay.
If you'd like, we can move to item nine, if you want to discuss it now in your report.
Yes, please.
Okay. If it's all right with the court, we'll go ahead and move on to item number nine. Okay.
Various department heads and officials have brought to our attention that there are some projected operating deficits in some of the departments. Therefore, I am presenting this proposed budget amendment to correct those shortfalls. On page one, it shows a proposed decrease in the loan payment of $505,763 with 66 cents, a proposed source of additional revenue from the Los Alamos Watershed Fund of $206,738.88, and a proposed increase in detention center revenue of $800,000, for a total of $1,512,502.54 in revenue to be generated. Those funds would be used to pay certain line items, first at the bottom of page one, in the countywide general fund. The rental copier line item is proposed to be increased by $2,392.44, group insurance by $250,000, autopsies by $20,000, computer updates by $10,000, contractual services by $50,000, indigent defense expense by $50,000, capital outlay by $149,964.97, and postage by $1,000. The county court at law is proposed to be, the court-appointed attorney ad litem, line item, is proposed to be increased by $10,000. In the Agriculture Extension Service Department, the salary of the secretary is proposed to be increased by $1,037.2, the salary of the clerk by $1,227, Social Security and Medicare taxes by $198.73, retirement by $196.23, office supplies by $2,150, custodial supplies by 500, demonstration materials by 500, computer update by 1,500, mileage by 2,300, travel and seminars by 2,500, postage by $250, repair and maintenance of equipment by $500, dues by $600, and copier rental by $300. Total for the Agriculture Extension Service proposed increase is $14,093.96. In the county judge's portion of the general fund, the auto expense is proposed to be increased by $15,000, travel and seminars by $2,000, salary of administrative assistant by $35,000, the miscellaneous line item increased by $5,000, Social Security and Medicare taxes by $2,625, and the employment retirement by $2,537.50. Total proposed increase for the county judge is $62,162.50. The Planning Department has requested the following increases: salary of the code enforcer increase of $5,000, Social Security and Medicare taxes by $375, employment, employee, retirement by $360. So the total for the Planning Department proposed increase is $5,735. The contract for 911 services, proposed increase in the travel and seminars line item of $356, maintenance and repairs of $592, training of $6,900, miscellaneous line item increased by $2,200. A proposed increase for the 911 services department is $10,048. In the adult probation department, the line item of indigent care is proposed to be increased by $5,000. In the treasurer's office, the line item of office supplies is proposed to be increased by $2,000. In the sheriff's office, the salary of official is proposed to be increased by $16,068. Salary of the captain would be increased by $20,957. Social Security and Medicare taxes would be increased by $1,571.77. Employee retirement would increase by $1,508.90. Fuel and oil would increase by $50,000, and the capital outlay for vehicles would be increased by $100,000. In the detention center, the line item for utilities would be increased by $85,000, and the line item for food consumption would be increased by $400,000. In the solid waste transfer station, the line item for utilities would be increased by $1,000, the line item for uniforms would increase by $9,000, repair and maintenance of equipment would increase by $10,000, the miscellaneous line item would increase by $5,000, closure expenses would increase by $10,000, hauling cost would increase by $150,000, making the total proposed increase for the solid waste transfer station of $185,000. And then in the countywide road and bridge fund, the line item for breath analyzer services would increase by $10,000, making a grand total of a transfer to all funds of $1,512,502.54, which is the same number as the projected increase in revenue on page one.
Mr. Carter, I visited with your office last time. What you're reading there is a totally different budget amendment that you're proposing than what you gave me. Well, whatever it is, I totally disagree with this budget amendment, because we got raises and we got all this time. There's a few that I do, and one is the detention center, but at this point in time, we're only three months into the year, and it's just a projection. We're doing great here, but it can change in a couple of months or so. And so I'd say we're way far ahead of the, right now, you know, we're only three months of the year. Like I said, I disagree with most of it, not all of it, and there are some raises that I can see that they're trying to give raises to employees while the others are left out with no increase. We didn't give nobody an increase in salary. So at this point in time, I don't think we have to take, at least, I don't agree to take any action on this, table it, you know, for two, three months to see where we're at, at this point in time. That's my motion. Table it. All right? You make your motion.
Commissioner, Ms. Ford, I'm going to ask you this question. One of us would like to split this up, in other words, vote yes in some item, no in another. What happens then? Like Commissioner Alvis says, I also agree with some, I disagree with some. What happens?
Well, you have to make an alternative motion. You have to make a motion indicating all your different changes that you want to propose. In other words, you're going to propose your own changes, and you're going to move to adopt what you're proposing, and somebody has to second, and then you're going to have a vote for it, but it's going to get complicated because you've got a lot of subparts.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if you're going to have the time right now.
Because here, there was a budget presented to try and pay the deficit. Here we go back and even impose more than what we, what was projected to pay the deficit. So we're going to go to the same old budget with the same deficit that we've had before in years.
Well, ordinarily, you have a budget workshop sometime to sit down and sort of...
That's what I'm saying, you know, like I said, and I see, like, the detention center, they're doing great, but like you said, Mr. Carter, that you cannot withhold the payment of the consumption of food for the employees. So there's no big hurry, you know? If they run out, you still continue paying, because they got the money there. And I don't see no problem with that, you know, they're going to need money, but we're just three months in the year of the new budget.
Well, you know, I totally disagree with you, Commissioner. I don't think anyone's getting any raises, and monies are needed, because the budget, the budget as it is, it's not functional. And I'll use some examples. For example, autopsies. We've already run out of money, or we're pretty close to out of money for autopsies. Those come in, we have to do them. Indigent defense, we have a contract with the state of Texas. It's not a matter of whether we want to pay it or not, and there's not enough money to pay for that. There's a lot of things in there that we have to do that we don't have the funding. Now, you say, let's wait two or three months. I say, you know, we need to get this thing going, because there's many, I guess, questions as to what can we do, what cannot. For example, fuel. I have absolutely not one penny for fuel.
And I agree with that, Judge, like I said.
Let me finish, Commissioner. I'll let you talk. Let me talk. You know, I cannot go and keep charging fuel to something that's not correct, you know, because this is fuel that I'm using. I cannot be using the transfer station, or the Gas Department, or something else. You know, I think all these things that were done here, there's still quite a bit of cuts that were done in the budget of last year, and that's fine. But I think this is the bare-bone minimum that's needed, and, you know, certainly, if Mr. Carter is presenting it, I'm sure he put a lot of study into it. So, you know, my thing is, why not do it now? It's got to happen sooner or later.
Judge and Commissioners, I'll only say that you're correct, Judge. This proposal is generated after extensive discussions with all the various department heads that are affected and other county officials. Every line item proposed to be changed here is very carefully considered. There are reasons behind each and every one. I'll tell you that for certain line items in here, I'm already holding invoices that I can't pay, because there's no money in the budget. So some of our vendors are going to be calling us very soon, wondering why they haven't been paid, and my answer will be that the court didn't approve the budget.
And you're correct. That's right. But we got things there that, I totally disagree with it, you know, in that budget there.
How else can it be ironed out for a workshop? We can have it tomorrow, this afternoon. I don't know, how can it be worked out? We just, well...
Well, I'm changes needed. We just got some issues.
Well, there's no motion, so I don't know, I mean, you can't really discuss, you don't even have a motion. There's no motion on the floor. We didn't discuss it this morning.
So the recommendations would be what? To table the, align the proposal?
The governing body, which you all have the authority either to move or not move. If you're recommending to move, a motion to table, then you have the authority to, on the discretion, to make that motion. If there's a second, there's a second, and if there's a vote, and a majority vote to table, then the item is tabled. If there's an alternate motion, an alternate motion is made, and there's a second.
In that case, I will make the motion to accept the recommendation of Mr. Carter.
Well, I got a motion first, sir, to table. I got a motion right now on the floor.
You already did the motion?
Yeah, I already made the motion to table.
Motion to table. So it requires now a second.
Okay, I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Got a second discussion? Oliver, please, aye? Opposed? Aye, opposed.
Aye, opposed.
Okay, it carries, a three, two vote to table. Mr. Carter, can you schedule a workshop as soon as possible? So that we can go ahead and get off-center on this thing? Okay, thank you. Let's go back to, anything else you need to report, Mr. Carter? If not, we'll go on to item number six, and this is to approve the vendor's list. Mr. Carter, is that...
I just moved, yeah. I second your...
Moved in second to approve the vendor's report. Oliver, please, aye? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item seven, this is just house cleaning, to authorize the treasurer to transfer monies from County White to Road and Bridge. Is there a motion for that?
I don't have a motion.
Moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item eight is to approve the investment report.
There are currently no known areas of concern for the safety of investments held in Starr County's investment portfolio or in regard to deposits held at any particular contracted institution other than item number five below regarding concentration risks. The investment portfolio of idle cash is two million eight hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars and four cents, and a hundred percent of it is in certificate of deposits at Lone Star National Bank. Total interest earnings and investments for the first quarter of fiscal year 2018, being the period of October 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, was a thousand eight hundred and two dollars with seventy cents. As per the terms of the depository contract, the county's amounts and deposits are properly collateralized in accordance with the pledge report for Lone Star National Bank. Starr County is aware of the investment concentration risk which was reported in the annual county financial audit. The county's investments are currently different maturity dates, but a hundred percent in CDs and in only one bank. To manage this concentration risk, the investment officers monitors the performance of Lone Star National Bank and its related security pledges very closely. This quarterly investment report for the first quarter fiscal year 2018 has been prepared in compliance with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act. Starr County is in compliance with the Texas Public Investment Act. We have six CDs expiring in the next few days, and I would like to reinvest in six-month CDs as interest rates are now expected to go up. Furthermore, we have six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars from the 1993 bond issue that is ideal, and I would like to invest in six-month CDs.
Any questions, comments?
We need approval to transfer that idle cash of six hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Is there a motion?
Transfer to what?
To the idle cash, to the investment portfolio.
I'll take that motion.
No, we need a motion.
I don't have a motion.
Moved and second, discussion.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item 10 is an action item, and this is to approve the final on page four, Rancho Santo Domingo. Mr. Arceo?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. At this time, I would like to recommend a final approval for Rancho Santo Domingo. It's already done, it's up to code, and it's ready to go. It's real nice, a real nice subdivision. It's in Commissioner Arce's precinct, and, well, it's ready.
I don't have a vote to approve the final, the final completion of this Rancho Santo Domingo.
A motion and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
Item 11 is an action item, and this is to approve the reimbursement in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars seventy-seven cents from the Starr County Democratic Party Primary Fund to the election expense line item.
Yeah, I wish at this moment to see if we can, I guess, move that money that was deposited to the general funds to the election expense item.
This money was from 2016.
2016. It was reimbursed from the Democratic Party.
I have motion and second to approve, discussion.
John, this election cost is going to be encountered by the Democratic Party, right?
No, only by the county and the Democratic Party.
The county and Democratic, how much of the share of the Democratic Party?
Basically, election day.
Election day.
Yeah. Okay. The county covers early voting.
I think I had a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 12 is an action item, and this is to approve the primary election personnel. John?
This is a list?
Yeah, you have the list in front of you all.
Yeah. I don't have a motion to approve as presented.
I second your honor.
Moved and second to approve.
This list is for early vote or for...
Election day, election day and early vote.
Election day?
And early vote.
We have some people, election. Yes.
Do you have a second?
Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 13 is to approve a donation to precinct one foot bank. Commissioner?
We approve it.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 14 is to rename a road in precinct one to Sylvester Road. Commissioner?
We approve the name Sylvester Road.
Moved and second. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item 15 is a, I guess, a donation to accept a check in the amount of forty-one dollars sixty-five cents from McCoy's to be deposited into the Road and Bridge Fund. Commissioner, please.
Make the motion to accept it.
Check the motion.
Moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. 16 is a budget amendment. Mr. Carter, is that in order?
Yes, your honor.
You can have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item 17 is an action item, and this is to approve a TDAHA house re...
Reservation.
Reservation agreement. I think it's renovation agreement. Twenty seventeen dash zero forty, correct?
That is correct, Judge. It's the contract that we have with the home reservation program that we do every year, and it's just stating that we will, when we do receive funding for the homes, we will abide by their policies and procedure.
For new homes? This is the application?
The new application, correct.
For how many homes that...
We don't have, they haven't given us the amount of funding yet. This is just, we need to do the agreement and then they're determined the funding amount.
But you don't have an actual, you don't have an actual...
An extra contract for the homes, extra homes? No, this is the agreement that we have to do first with the TDAHD.
I don't have a motion.
Moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item 18 is also to approve an agreement between the Texas Department of Agriculture and the county of Starr for a CDBG contract number seventy-two seventeen four forty. Matty?
That is correct. It's a contract that we have received with Texas CDBG for the amount of two hundred and six thousand and seventy-nine dollars, and this is for road improvements for...
Is that the one on Mike subdivision?
That is correct. Mike seven.
How far off are we from starting construction? Where are the planning stages, the plans were made?
We just received the contract.
You just received the contract?
That is correct. That's why this has to be approved first.
Okay, well, then from there, we have to go out on...
That is correct. We'll do the procurement policy, then we'll go through bids.
I don't have a motion.
I second your honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item nineteen, also related to that, is to authorize the signatories for the contract.
Signatures for the judge?
Just saying that he's still the administrator for the county.
Moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty is an action item, and this is to approve a contribution in the amount of ten thousand dollars to the Starr County Soil and Water Conservation District. Mr. Arce, go out. Okay, this is...
This is for the soil conservation that we always contribute to?
Yes, yeah, it was in the budget.
I don't have a motion.
I second your honor.
Moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-one is to approve a refund for partial seventy-two seven sixty-seven was granted exemption status for 2017. Ms. Alinas, I don't know what the amount is.
What is that exemption for? What was it?
No, we need to table this for next Commissioner's Court. I just have all the information, so I can provide the point.
We table it.
Moved and second to table, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-two and twenty-three are, and twenty-four are budget amendments. Mr. Carter, are they in order?
Yes, yes, sir.
Move the budget amendments.
Second, your honor. Moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-five is an action item, and this is on the regulation of time, place, and manner of electioneering by prohibiting electioneering during voting period as defined in the Texas Election Code. Mr. Arce, go out. Mr. Canales, explain what that's about.
Have you all received the left by Mr. Canales?
Yes.
All in favor, any questions with the time or...
What does this consist of or what?
Do you have the pack in front of you?
Yes, but can we get an explanation? I talked...
Yeah, go ahead.
We got to talk to Mr. Canales before he left, saying he was supposed to have sent Lori here to do a presentation, and apparently, what he told me, that he saw a problem with the people putting up here, here in front of the courthouse, and a problem with La Rosita area, that the Commissioners Court had the discretion to either keep it the way we are or do whatever discretion we want to. But apparently, to avoid having people here with, putting up signs like they always used to do here in years before. You know, and I see a problem here, the Commission, here in front of the courthouse, that there's people here, come and park vehicles there a month before, even the early voting start to secure their places. And I had already told the judge who called back ago that we needed, it doesn't need to sign that anyway, you know, that we need to regulate that to have an equal opportunity for all the candidates, you know. They want to say, you know, draw names or draw lines, you know, if they want to stick all together on one side or the other, you know. That's my opinion, not have somebody, you know, come and sit there because they want to, you know. Pick, you know, heavily. There's two different parties going on right now. One can choose one side, the other one can choose the other, in my opinion.
I think what the document stated, Mr. Arce, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they want no politicking or...
It's electioneering.
Electioneering.
As that term is defined in sixty-one of the Texas Election Code.
Yeah, anywhere in any county property. That includes Rosita, La Casita, the courthouse, anywhere.
Right, because the county is the entity that owns the property, and therefore, under sixty-one of the Texas Election Code, the governing body does have the authority to regulate time, place, and manner of electioneering on there. And the idea, we would assume, is that these locations are often working government locations, for example, the courthouse. The judicial process continues. We have a lot of things that are going on in the courthouse. And sometimes, and as Mr. Garcia, Commissioner Garcia has noted, that sometimes the parking lot, half of the parking lot is taken up. Now, to address your point that you can sort of put people in two camps, I don't believe that you can do that. I believe that that would be a First Amendment violation. For example, you can have a candidate that says, what if I don't want to be in either of the two camps? What if it says, I don't want to be in either of those two camps? What is it? Cannot, you can't, in other words, the regulations must be content neutral. And by saying and by trying to split people into different camps that you may define doesn't necessarily mean that that's content neutral. In fact, now you're regulating the content. You're saying, this slate is on this side, and this slate is on this side, and we're gonna draw names, but then that would mean that the regulation is not content neutral.
Well, but I think that we can say, okay, you're gonna draw names for every candidate, and then you should put slots there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, you know, and let them draw names. Whoever picks number one stays in an area number one, restricted to one certain area.
But it's still content. At that point, you're still trying, it's still regulating content. It must be content neutral. Some persons may draw a name and not like where they drew.
So, that's what I'm saying. So then, what is it that, what is it that's supposed to be, you know...
Now, in the end, in the end, if the court adopts it, if the governing body adopts it, then that would mean that electioneering would be prevented on those areas as identified in the resolution. And basically, electioneering would have to happen outside of the county grounds. And so, it's up to the governing body at this point.
But we can, that's up to the governing body, but we can continue to allow them to do it here, right? That's what Mr. Canales said. You have the authority to say, yes, we can continue doing the way it was done before.
Yeah, you have the authority. I mean, it's gonna pass or not pass. I mean, the governing body is the body that has the right to go ahead and regulate. And that's the proposal, but if the governing body decides not to adopt it, that's fine. But these regulations are meant to regulate the areas of the governing body to prohibit electioneering and prevent electioneering during the election period as indicated. And we, you know, the fact of the matter is, Commissioner, that, you know, we've all been here, and, you know, we've seen the tents, and they've been all over the place, and they will cover all of the parking lots and driveways and roadways of the governing, you know, of the areas that are electioneering.
Well, not in our, in my, we don't have no problem to continue operating or anything there, you know. And I think that, I think what I see here is they're trying to deprive the citizens to come and vote, you know, and every candidate has the right to...
How would it be preventing the citizens from voting?
They're not deprived from the vote.
In fact, you don't have people jumping on them, yelling at them and screaming at them from, you know, a few feet away. I think this is in favor of voters, not against it.
Yeah. And I totally agree with you, Mr. Arce, and I commend you for, you and Victor for doing this, because I feel our people, a lot of our people don't come to vote because of us.
They feel harassed and oppressed.
Yeah, they feel harassed, they feel bullied, they feel, you know, I think if we just leave it open, all of them, and let whoever wants to go vote, vote their will, however they want, I think we'll be making a giant step forward in Starr County as far as elections are concerned. Because, you know, I get a lot of comments that a lot of people don't want to come to vote because they see, they see us as vultures just sitting there waiting to see, you know, who's coming in. I certainly would be in favor of passing it.
Your honor, I would make a motion to approve a...
Excuse me, before you all make a motion...
Wait just a moment. He's making a motion.
Motion to approve, your honor, the possible action of the regulation of the time, place, and manner of electioneering by prohibiting electioneering during any voting period as defined by the Texas Election Code in or on property owned or under the care, custody, and control of the county of Starr pursuant to the laws and rules of the state of Texas, the Texas Constitution, Article V, eighteen, the Texas State Local Government, two ninety-one point zero zero one, and section sixty-one of the Texas Election Code and the Texas Secretary of State, the Election Advisory, number two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, and the common law granting the county authority to regulate the public health and safety.
Let me, okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, discussion.
Okay. Okay, discussion. So then you can hold elections here in the courthouse or any other place in county ground?
We cannot hold elections.
Yeah.
That's, we don't actually know, I don't know what the actual election grounds are going to be, but how...
But that's it, I say, we're gonna have an election here in this courthouse.
Correct.
Yes.
So, we cannot hold them here.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
So then, what are you trying to say?
That we cannot be out there like vultures in the parking lot.
Electioneering.
Electioneering almost.
Well, and under discussion, yes, ma'am, I'd like to help Mr. Garcia do give him an opinion.
Well, I think under Robert Rules of Order, once a motion is made in a second, only the governing body can discuss.
That's correct. Well, then I would ask you at the very least to look at the code section that actually limits and says that you can regulate, but you cannot eliminate the electioneering beyond the hundred feet. I have the code section here, if you want to look at it, where it talks about reasonableness, of limitations that you can make. I, as a voter, can also...
Yeah, you're out of order, ma'am.
Yes, I am. But so are you, gentlemen.
No, I'm not, because I'm following Robert Rules of Order. No, I'm not, because I'm following Robert Rules of Order. A motion was made and second, only the governing body can, can discuss. Okay, I have a motion and second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye, I oppose, Your Honor.
Okay, let the record show it, four, one vote. Motion carries. It is, uh, ten fifty, and pursuant to section five-five, one point oh seven, four, we are going to executive session to discuss order of salaries. It's, uh, eleven-ten, and we're back in open session. We only have one item, and that was order of salaries. It's our motion to.
Move to second.
Move and second to approve, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. It's our motion.
Motion carries.
Second.
Move and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.